Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Virginia City Council Meeting. I will call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, April 23rd, 2019, at 5:30 PM. We have a archway in the audience today. I don't think I've ever seen one since I've been on the council. There's many people here today, but it's for a very important presentation for our firefighter EMS personnel. So Pam, before we get to the promotional ceremony for the Fire Department Officer Positions, would you please take the roll call?
Bearbo?
Present.
Leave his absence. Paulson?
Here.
Biondich?
Present.
Johnson?
Here.
Aaron Zelli?
Here.
Cuffey?
Here. Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, welcome, everybody who's listening at home and those who are in the audience for this very special occasion. Item 3.1 is an honor for us as a city council. It's an honor for us as a city, and it's an honor for us to represent the citizens of Virginia in honoring our fire EMS personnel. And I'm going to call upon, we would like to call upon Chief Allen Lewis to issue the announcements for the promotional positions that were made over the course of time. And Chief Lewis, welcome. Very much appreciate you coming here, and we're very proud to have you and your staff here today.
Thank you. Candidates, please come forward.
And if you would, is it possible, Chief, to face the camera so that everybody can be proud of our promotional firefighter EMS personnel? Thank you.
Today, you see before you candidates from the Virginia Fire Department that have been promoted to firefighter, paramedic, to engineer positions, and to lieutenant positions, along with the Division Chief of Training and the Deputy Chief's position. All of these candidates competed in a very, very rigorous promotional process, and were selected through city and staff personnel for the positions they hold. Scott Fredrickson is our deputy chief. If you could just indicate, I'm just going to talk very, very briefly about each of these before we do the swearing-in. As deputy fire chief, Scott Fredrickson is responsible for all of my duties and been in my absence, so he has the full authorities and responsibilities as a fire chief. It's a very, very important position. He oversees our EMS operations, and I'm very, very happy to have him. Couldn't think of a better candidate, so congratulations, Scott. Frank Rourke is our Division Chief of Training. As such, he oversees all of our fire and EMS training and scheduling, both in the house, internally and externally. Very happy to have you as well. Battalion Chief Martenson, our most recently promoted battalion chief, oversees day-to-day operations on the D shift. So we have three different shifts that run for 24 hours at a time. He's the person in charge of that shift and that crew. Thank you and congratulations. We also have three lieutenants. Tiffany Larson is one of them, and lieutenants Hanover and Olivante could not be with us tonight. Both had other personal issues. But the lieutenants is a brand-new position. It was created in the Fire Department due to the size and the growth of our staff. The level of supervision needed to be there beyond just the captain's level. We have four engineers with us tonight as well, or we have three of them with us tonight. So we have Dave McClellan, and we have John Carlson, I guess couldn't be here tonight, that's right, and Jim Hippel, and Will Fisher. So want to congratulate our engineers on their promotion. As engineer, they're responsible for getting the apparatus safely to the scene, whether it be the ladder or the engine. Congratulations on all your promotions. Firefighter, paramedic Patrick Fitzsimmons. He is one of our, he was hired as a single-role paramedic. He is the ninth person that was hired as a single-role EMT or paramedic to be promoted into the dual-role firefighter/paramedic, meaning instead of working 40 hours a week, he now gets to work 56. So congratulations, Patrick Fitzsimmons. So I just thought it was helpful to have a little bit of background and positions. In the fire service, as in many other, as in the military branches of service, and we are a paramilitary-type organization, the oath of office is a significant part of this. It signifies the acceptance of the duties and responsibilities of the office which these people enter and their allegiance to the department and the country which they serve. So I'll go ahead. Rudy, I am sorry. What did I not have on my list? Captain Mikel Ruda-Bush, please raise your hand and be recognized. See, this is why I have a deputy chief. Saving my bacon. Mikel Ruda-Bush, very, very strong candidate for this position, and I want to recognize his military service to our country as well. The service that he gave our country definitely helped in his development for the captain's position in our Fire Department. He is our newest promoted captain. My apologies. Congratulations. Anything else? All right. We'll go ahead and do the promotional ceremony at this time, which consists of the oath of office, and instead of administering it individually, we'll administer it classically. So I will let them get on with the council meeting. So if you would, candidates, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, and your name, do solemnly swear
I solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend
I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States
Constitution of the United States.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will bear true faith
I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same
And allegiance to the same.
I will support the policies
I will support the policies.
And procedures of the Virginia Fire Department
And procedures of the Virginia Fire Department.
I will faithfully and honorably
I will faithfully and honorably.
Bear allegiance to my superiors
Bear allegiance to my superiors.
I will, to the best of my ability
I will, to the best of my ability.
Protect the safety and lives
Protect the safety and lives.
Of the citizens and firefighters
Citizens and firefighters.
Whose care has been entrusted to me
Whose care has been entrusted to me.
I take this obligation freely
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion
Or purpose of evasion.
I will well and faithfully discharge
I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office
Duties of the office.
On which I am about to enter
On which I am about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. First, congratulations, Deputy Chief Fredrickson.
Chief.
Congratulations. Battalion Chief Bill Martenson. Congratulations. Patrick Fitzsimmons. Congratulations.
Hang on a second, everybody. Come on back up here. We stand in line, and we'd like to congratulate you personally.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
I think that what I'd like to say, just a brief statement about these men and women of our Fire Department EMS. And I think we've all discussed this, just about every time we see a response by a firefighter EMS, when the emergency vehicles go back and forth, the countless hours without sleep for the safety and security of this community can only be fully appreciated by those who work beside you. We take your work for granted. The citizens take your work for granted. But we know that you're behind the scenes taking care of us every single day, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, work every holiday, every weekend, every single day to keep this community safe, provide them the emergency healthcare that they need. And so I want to say this for myself, and if anybody on the council wants to say, not only do you work under difficult circumstances, you have to live and work in a facility that is not adequate. It's a facility that we are embarrassed, and I am as embarrassed as a mayor of the city of Virginia, that you have to live and work under those conditions. I know we're working very hard to find you a new facility. We'll continue to do that. But I want to say thank you for your patience and your guidance and the professionalism that you exhibit every single day, working under those conditions. So on behalf of myself personally and all of us from the citizens of Virginia, thank you very much for everything that you do. And thank you for the families, for all your sacrifices, because you know that they get called all the middle of the night. They're away from you for a day at a time, 24 hours a day. For those of you, relationships, you know, it's really good that you support the men and women of this Fire Department EMS system. So for the parents and the wives and the spouses and the family members and little kids, you know, congratulations to all of you. So thanks for your sacrifice and allowing these professionals to work for the city of Virginia. Anybody want to say anything? Anybody have anything they'd like to say on behalf of the city? Counselor Bearbo.
I just appreciate these gentlemen and these young ladies that are on this department. I had an unfortunate episode this fall, and I had a wonderful experience with an ambulance ride to Duluth, even though I was stubborn, didn't want to go down there, but I had outstanding care, and I was a sick young man. Well, I'm not so young anymore. I'm pretty old. Most of these young men have not been on this department when I started on the city council, so I want to just congratulate all of you one more time. I've seen a lot of people come and go, and this is an outstanding group of individuals. Thank you for your service.
Counselor Biondich.
Yes, I also would like to thank everybody. You're hardworking, you're available, and you're very convenient for me. If I have an accident, I can just run down the street. Thank you.
Counselor Bundiselli.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm very proud of you guys. I've been like that forever, and I feel that you're the best around. Saved a lot of lives. You guys are busy, you don't sit over there and polish trucks and whatever. I'm really happy to have you guys working for the city of Virginia and our citizens. Thank you, guys, girls.
Once again, thank you very much. Now, you're all welcome to stay for the next hour and a half as we conduct our business. Otherwise, thanks again for coming, everybody, and have a safe trip home. Thank you, Counselor Johnson. I would like to forego with the regular order of business and move down to item 8.3 on the agenda under Discussion Items, which is, we have Matt Reed from SCH here. He spent a lot of time last Tuesday listening and waiting for an hour and a half or two hours for us to get to his issue, and it's something we proved at the committee of the whole meeting. So I'd like to move down to item 8.3, which is adopt a resolution approving the bids from Masaba Batuminus for the 12th Avenue West Improvement Project in the amount of $731,420.35. Matt?
Thank you, Mayor, members of city council. I think this is the first time I've gotten pushed ahead of the consent agenda, so I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Yeah, so Mayor Cuffey summarized it. I can answer any questions. The bids came in favorable, and we will be working on scheduling a pre-construction meeting here shortly, and we'll have more information. But again, I can answer any questions you might have related to the bids.
And it was moved at committee level to approve and adopt the resolution upon your recommendation to award Masaba Batuminus project an amount of $731,420.35. So if there's no discussion or questions for our city engineer, Matt Reed, I guess, Britt?
Matt, if you could, since we're on the camera, could you kind of explain the project schedule, how it's going to happen, being that is our busiest intersection in the city of Virginia in front of KFC, or yeah, KFC and McDonald's and such?
Sure.
Thank you.
So the extent of the project, we're going to be working on one block south of the intersection of 12th Avenue West and Highway 53, so as Britt mentioned over by KFC, and then we're going also several blocks to the north, so from 53 up to 8th Street. So what'll happen is, I'm not sure exactly how they're going to phase it all, but the bottom line is we've incorporated some nighttime work at those two, the block north and the block south of Highway 53 to try to minimize the impact on traffic. We've got to be able to keep those businesses accessible, and so we're going to work those during the evening, and there will be some short-term detours, and for the blocks north of 13th Street, there might be a little bit longer-term detours, but it'll be, it's a project that really, really, really needs to be done. It's a mill and overlay project. We're also doing sidewalks and pedestrian intersections, so it's going to be a real nice addition. Oh, we'll be adding some streetlights and decorative lighting as well on that corridor. So it should look pretty nice when it's all done.
Thank you, Matt. Counselor Johnson.
Thank you, Matt, Mayor. I'm just going to let you know that I understand, I feel proud of this now after two and a half years, but I am going to be watching for change orders to make sure that the change orders don't add up to more than $30,000. That would be a concern I have, but it's the same concern I always have.
Fair enough, yep.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Counselor Bearbo.
Matt, are you going to do some soils correction in that area too, if you find any? Because you're going to be doing some basically drilling and stuff, aren't you, to check on some of those soils?
Yep, we did do some borings, and it looked like what was under there was going to be sufficient. I mean, it came down to, it's a mill and overlay, so do we go ahead and do that, or do we do a full reconstruct, which would have tripled the size of this project dollar-wise? And so if we encounter some particularly bad areas, which I'm not expecting, but we may, then we would do a soil correction in those areas, but we're not going to go through the entire project and do it. So if we come across some, yes, we will.
Counselor Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. Matt, I just have to ask this, because I was asked this by two or three people now. At the intersection between Kentucky Fried Chicken and Super 1, how, I don't know, does Mendat designate how that left turn lane goes, or is that the city? And is that something that can be possibly redirected or renavigated during this time?
It's the city's decision, but it's somewhat controlled by Mendat due to the way that the lighting is set up. So they've got the loop detectors out there to control the traffic signal, right? And they're actually coming through, I should maybe clarify that, they're coming through next year, I believe, and redoing the intersection of 12th and 53 as well as 13th and 53 farther over by Walgreens.
Okay.
So the way those loop detectors are set in there, if we start shifting those lanes too much, you'll miss the loop detectors going through, and the lights won't operate properly. So as of right now, it's going back. I know it's really a weird intersection, the way it aligns.
And I think the conversation is, excuse me, people that are driving from Menards, and KFC would be on the left, and they have maybe a flatbed, you know, a trailer behind them hauling, and it's hard for them to navigate that turn without taking some risks there.
Yep, I understand.
So I just, I don't know if that can be addressed at all, but you know.
We did look at it, and really for that particular, the way that intersection is set up, in order to have enough stacking volume for the cars that are turning left or right, going towards Menards or going around to Super 1, we've got to have those lanes divided, otherwise we'll have cars potentially backing up onto Highway 53. So it's a little bit unique.
Thanks for the clarification explanation.
Sure. And so for further clarification, we will not be doing that entire block because of the fact that Mendat's coming in and redoing those loop detectors. We don't want to mill that off, repave it, and have them come back in next year and rip it all up again.
Okay.
So we'll be working with them next year on the rest of that.
Thank you, Counselor Paulson.
Matt, could you just clarify, this is a Mendat project, so how much is the responsibility of the city?
State aid, yes. And I believe, I'd have to double-check, but I think state aid is covering this 100%. It's very close. It's mostly state aid covered, yes.
I just wanted to clarify.
Yes.
And the reason that we're doing this road as opposed to any of the other ones in the community, because there are many roads and streets that we all know that need, are drastically needed to repair, is we're doing this is because it is a state aid road, correct?
Right.
So we use state aid money to do a state aid road, and that's why we're redoing this one in front of all these other ones that aren't state aid properties that we have a responsibility for.
Correct.
Right? Okay, thank you very much, Matt. Is there anything else anybody has they'd like to bring up before under Discussion Items? So it's been moved and supported to, is there a motion to approve?
I will move to approve the contract.
A move by Counselor Johnson to approve the contract to Masaba Batuminus in the amount of $720,000. Is there support?
All support.
Support by Counselor Bearbo. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Thank you, Matt.
Okay, thank you. Thank you again for moving me up on the agenda.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
And I think I would also like to deviate from the regular council agenda and move to item 9.2C under committee reports. If I may turn this over to our city administrator, Britsy Benness, regarding the resolution.
Thank you. At the committee level on Tuesday, the 16th, we had met with Amaraesco to discuss a citywide Building Energy Efficiency Improvement Plan, and it was moved and supported at that time to adopt the resolution to enter into a project development agreement with Amaraesco to do more of a detailed research of what the buildings would need for this Building Energy Efficiency Improvement Plan.
And we have a, it was, his resolution is to enter into development agreement for that purpose.
Correct. And what the development agreement is, is a more detailed deep dive of what we would actually do as part of the project if we were to move forward with the project.
If we were to move forward with the project. Okay. So, thank you. Any discussion, or I would like to counsel if they'd like to move this forward or not? Counselor Johnson?
I will move to move development agreement with Amaraesco forward to study the potential energy savings to the city.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Move to Counselor Johnson. Is there support?
I will support, but if I have a question.
Support by Counselor Biondich? Discussion. Counselor Biondich.
Okay. And I see you're in the audience, so as I expressed at our last meeting, I just want to make sure that the taxpayers are not going to be having to fund this, that the monies that we save will help pay for this project. And the only thing that, if we back out of this, we are responsible for that, was it $34,000 or something like that?
Yes.
So, go ahead. I just have to be comfortable with this.
And I think just to clarify as well, Counselor Biondich, that we did, you did provide a service for us, right?
Yes.
And did some work already on behalf of the city of Virginia. And was payment made for that? No. So this would be part of that process as well. So please, thank you, Counselor Biondich. Please state your name for the record, and welcome.
Yeah, so John Neville, Regional Director for Amaraesco. Thanks, Mr. Mayor, for introduction, and council members. So to answer your specific question, at the last meeting, I presented it's a self-funding project. Amaraesco guarantees the energy savings to make the payment over time for the project. So the only cost to the city is if they're, if you decide not to move forward with the project, the project development agreement for $34,700, I believe, is an exit fee.
Okay.
Yeah, and that would be the only...
And is there a timeframe on that, if we...
We put together a schedule in the, I have it right here.
Should be in our packet as well.
Yeah. So there, at the very end of the project development agreement, we have a list of all the facilities that we're going to review within the city, and the very last page is our timetable. So we intend to be back here with our preliminary findings to council around July 9th.
Okay.
And then we'll work out final scope with the council folks and staff the following week thereafter, and then deliver basically our energy service agreement to move forward with the project. So we'll be back here in July with our detailed study report.
Thank you.
After working with the team, and we already set up communication with the utility.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Should I stay at the podium?
Thank you, Counselor Biondich. Counselor Bearbo.
I just have one question for you. You know, I had a lot of questions at our preliminary committee of the whole meeting. Once you come back with the scope now, we just have usually one meeting in July, so that could be a little bit of an issue, might end up into August, but once should we determine the scope? How does the money get generated for the product itself as you change things over? Does that come out of the bond process that you're going to work with to get the initial dollars, or is the city responsible for spending the dollars on the product, like the new LED lights or whatever it is? Or do you foot the initial, because you're not going to have everything done at once, so the savings isn't going to come back that fast. How does that work?
So again, the process is we would take the total project amount out for an RFP for bids on your behalf. We'll open those bids with you folks and make a recommendation. We'll summarize and make a recommendation. Those dollars then go into basically a pot, and we submit purchase orders to make, to utilize those dollars from the pot and to pay for the various projects as they get completed.
So you go basically...
And then we work with, yes, we work with your staff to do completion statements on each of the projects as they're totally finished and signed off. Then we put in requests for the dollars.
Okay, so you don't really know the dollars ahead of time except from estimates then, correct?
Well, that's what the detailed study is all about. We're going to go out and get quotes from contractors for all the projects, bring that back to the table, so we will have firm numbers for the council.
Okay, but you still haven't really answered my question. The upfront costs then for product, is that coming out of, because the initial end is going to be paid from the savings, correct?
Right.
But the savings don't come immediately, because you're not going to do everything all at one time in a very short period of time. It might take you six months to do all the...
Well, actually, the first payment, the dollars, whether it's a bond issue or revenue bond or whatever the case may be, whatever's advantageous for the city, the first payment isn't due until the project is totally finished.
Oh, okay. I misunderstood.
Yeah, so when we do the lighting, what typically happens is the savings are already accumulating as we're doing the lighting and any of the other projects. It's not until the whole project is signed off that the first payment is due. By then, you've already accumulated savings to easily make the first payment.
Okay, that answers my question.
Okay, very good.
Better. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Hey, thank you, Councilor Bearbu. Any further discussion? Councilor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I would point out that there, the miners complex is not part of this as we're moving forward in the different areas. I just want to make sure that the list we have does not include miners, as that could potentially be, that's a whole different, whole different ball of wax. Thank you.
Okay, very good.
Okay. It's been moved and supported to move forward with the, to adopt the resolution. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much for coming up. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council.
Be hearing from you soon. Thank you. Let's move back to the regular agenda. We'll move to item four, the public forum. Is anybody in the audience that'd like to address the council this evening before we Seeing none, we'll move to item five, the consent agenda. The following items will be enacted by one motion unless a counselor or a citizen of the city of Virginia requests that the item be considered separately. Item 5.1 is the approval and corrections of the minutes of the regular meeting held on April 9th, 2019. Item 5.2, adopt fine rats resolution number 19-008, the schedule of bills. Item 5.3, approve the following travel requests. 5.3A, Chris Clark from the fire department to attend the fire scene examination training June 25th through the 27th, 2019 in Duluth at a cost of $355. Chris Clark is our fire marshal. Item 5.3B, Stephanie, oh boy, Will Chaz, is that correct? Thank you. I apologize if I misspoke there. Library to attend the third annual Northeast Minnesota Library Staff Serving Youth Unconference on May 11th, 2019 in Grand Rapids, Minnesota at a cost of $124.28. Item 5.3C, Jared Crawl, investigator for the police department to attend the computer digital investigations training, May 29th, 2019 in Owatonna, Minnesota at a cost of $432. And finally, item 5.3D, Britsy Benis, our city administrator, Pamela Bean, our city clerk, and Chris Johnson, administrative assistant, to attend the MCFoA Regional Two Training, May 17th through 19th in Kiwattan at a cost of, a total cost of $90. These are the consent agenda items as listed. Look for a motion from the council.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Consent agenda is moved for approval by Councilor Paulson. Is there support?
All support.
Support by Councilor Bearbu. Is there any further discussion?
Councilor Barneselli.
I'm sorry, Councilor Barneselli.
We're going to change names.
Maybe you should just put your name tag over there, and your name tag over there, and it won't change anything. Yeah, I'm sorry. Seconded by Councilor Barneselli.
We're just teasing you, Mayor.
Rightfully so. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item six, appearances. We have no one scheduled to appear before the council today. Item seven, unfinished business. We have none. Item eight, discussion items. Item 8.1, adopt a resolution to fill the boot campaign for the Virginia Fire Department Local 390. They do this every year and, and collect donations for muscular dystrophy. It's something that happens throughout the state of Minnesota. It's what the fire departments do around this country. And so, they're requesting to do that again this year, and I'm looking for approval to adopt the resolution allowing them to do so. Councilor Johnson?
I'll move the resolution accepting donations from area residents and businesses for the build of the campaign.
Thank you. Is there support? Support by Councilor Biondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item 8.2, bids for commodities for Public Works Department for the year beginning May 1st, 2019. Item 8.2A is to adopt a resolution approving the quote from Compass Minerals, $87.35 a ton for crushed rock salt. This is something that we do every year, and this is the resolution recommendation moving forward for this particular project for public works. Do I have a motion from the council? Moved by Councilor Barneselli, I got that right. Is there support?
Support for discussion.
Support by Councilor Johnson for discussion, further discussion? Councilor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. When do we have to write the check for these commodities?
On delivery.
And when will we be getting them?
Probably not till the snow flies again.
Okay. Because I do know that later in the agenda, there's some transfers going on, so I want to make sure that we aren't going to be writing checks next week.
So, what these salt producers do is they, all summer long, they're mining this salt, they're rocking it, so then we need to tell them how much we need so that they know how much they need to collect.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Johnson.
There was my question.
Thank you. Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Item 8.2B, adopt a resolution approving a quote from Northwest for asphaltic concrete surface maintenance services. Northwest what? Northwest?
Asphalt.
Okay, North, oh, I'm sorry. Quote from Northwest Asphalt for concrete surface maintenance services at 68 cents a foot. Do I have a motion?
I will move the, accepting the proposal from Northwest Asphalt Maintenance to provide asphaltic concrete maintenance services.
Is there support? Is there support? Support by Councilor Biondich. Is there any further discussion? Same question, Councilor Johnson?
Well, I, I had asked earlier, but what we're doing is 29,411 of street fixing is basically what we're trying to do.
Those cracks in the street, this is commonly called crack ceiling.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah. It is the one maintenance measure we can take to try to protect our streets that we do have that are in good condition.
Is this in conjunction with the county, too?
Yes.
Okay, so they, it's, it's a combination bid, so we get a little...
And again, it's one of those things, it's not, they don't do all 29,000 feet at one time, they do it throughout the year, so it takes a while to spend it down.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Been moved and supported. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you. We've concluded item 8.3, moved to item 8.4. There's a request from the AEOA, the Area Economic Opportunity Agency, for a letter of support for the senior care consultant program. It was moved and supported at committee level to submit a letter of support from the city for this important senior care consulting program. Do I have a motion from the council?
I'll move to approve.
Moved by Councilor Paulson to approve, and the letter moving forward, and supported by Councilor Barneselli. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item 8.5, adopt a resolution approving the transfer of $1 million from the investment accounts held with Northland Securities to the city general fund. I'm going to ask Sherry to explain the reason why we're doing this, and I think there was some issues about transferring funds last year because of the Highway 53 of $5.4 million, and we didn't transfer the funds then. But it's necessary to do that now to cover those expenses until we can attempt to recover. That's part of this, is that correct, Sherry?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Do you want me to?
Yeah, please explain.
Basically, we get our LGA and our property taxes, half appropriation is in June and in December. So, March, April, and May are very, what I call, cash poor months for the city. And we just need a little help because we went ahead and did not bond for the 5.4 million note, and we paid out of our reserves and out of our general fund. And we are anticipating getting that back.
We're, we're working hard at it, or the whole, we're all working hard at it.
Yeah. We saved ourselves quite a bit of money in fees and our bond rating so that we can do other projects. So, we do need to transfer $1 million to help with just the basic payroll and payables for April here in May.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Johnson?
My question is, is a million enough at this time?
We are anticipating getting a little more in May than what we got in March and April. So, at this time, we're hoping a million is enough, but I, I will be back if I need it.
We're hoping that you aren't.
Yes.
Mayor, I would move the transfer of up to $1 million from the investment accounts held with Northland Securities to the city's general fund. Do you hear me? Aye.
Thank you, Councilor Johnson. Moved by Councilor Johnson, is there support?
All support for any further discussion.
Okay, support by Councilor Bearbu. Is there any further discussion? I think there probably will be more discussion at the next committee of the whole meeting with regards to a variety of things. Hearing no further discussion at this council meeting, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Move to item nine, committee reports. 9.1 is the Personnel Committee that was held on April 16th, 2019, and I'll turn the committee report portion of this council meeting to our city administrator, Britsy Benis. Britt?
Thank you. At the Personnel Committee meeting on April 16th, 2019, we had a discussion with Brian Silber, Park and Recreation Director, regarding the staffing shortages that we had not filled two positions from quite a few years ago. And the result of that, there's a large amount of overtime that's being cut, being consumed at the Park and Rec Department. It was moved and supported to approve forwarding the discussion of hiring two utility workers to this meeting. So, today, we are here to ask for the approval to hire two utility workers for the Park and Rec Department. I do want to preface this that it takes at least three months before this person would start with the city if we were to start adding new people tomorrow. So, this would not be a position that would be hired till July.
And so, you know, you're asking to give us, for us to give you the approval to begin the process?
Correct.
And then you'll come back to us if there's a recommendation to hire based on the finances?
Correct.
Very good. Thank you. Councilor Biondich?
Thank you. I am asking if we could table this just for a couple weeks?
Hey, you have a motion to table?
Yes.
Councilor Biondich, there's a motion on the floor by Councilor Biondich to table this for the next committee of the whole meeting, or for when?
The next committee of the whole.
Which is next Tuesday?
Yes.
Okay, a motion?
It's not next Tuesday, it's until May 7th.
Okay, May 7th?
Correct.
So, you're, you're making a question, table this until May 7th?
Yes.
Is there support for that? Is there support for that?
All support.
Okay, support by Councilor Paulson? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Roll call, please.
Paulson?
Yes.
Biondich?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Barneselli?
Yes.
Huffy?
No.
Bearbu?
Yes.
Motion passes five to one. Thank you.
Britt? And the next item on the agenda was the discussion regarding the non-DOT drug and alcohol policy, and it was moved and supported to direct the city administrator, myself, to draft a non-DOT drug and alcohol policy and to bring it back to the Personnel Committee.
Thank you. Councilor Paulson?
I'll move to adopt that resolution.
Moved by Councilor Paulson to adopt the resolution. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilor Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Councilor Paulson?
I just have one item. On the committee meeting minutes, on the Personnel Committee, I was marked absent.
Oh, and you made a motion.
So, I know I was late coming in. Oh, do you? Okay.
And the later down in the minutes, you are there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. It's been moved and supported. Back to the drug policy. Is there any further discussion? Councilor Johnson?
Just have one question. Are we in the minutes for you to read it? It's non-DOT with the OT small, should those be capital?
Correct.
Because I, first time I wrote it on non-dot drug, I thought maybe it was...
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I did the same thing earlier today, so, okay, is there any further discussion on this matter? It's been moved and supported. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
And that was all the items from the Personnel Meeting on April 16th.
Thank you. And there was a committee of the whole meeting that was held on April 16th, 2019, and once again, I'll move this over to our city administrator, Britsy Benis.
Thank you. At the committee of the whole meeting, the first item discussed was to approve submitting a non-binding letter of intent for the sale and conveyance, sale and/or conveyance of city-owned property to ISD 706, 2154, which is known as parcel B for the new school facilities project.
And as a clarification, this parcel B is the Virginia portion of the former Progress Park property, is that correct?
Correct. That's on White Cedar Drive, between White Cedar Drive and Highway 53.
It's for the public certification. It's up in Midway, between Slumberland and the old gas station between Borghen Road and in Slumberland, there's a road called White Cedar Drive that was for economic development years ago as a combination agreement between the ITRL, Breeder City of Virginia, and City of Evell. That has since been dissolved, and the properties in this Progress Park, for the exception of a very small parcel, were returned to each respective city. The parcel B that the city is, the school is requesting is falls within the city limits of Virginia on this Progress Park return of property. So, just a little bit of highlighting, in your packet, there's a map, and anybody who's interested in taking a look at that property, we have extra maps available, and we could either send them to you or make sure that you have those. Okay, Councilor Johnson?
I will move to provide a non-binding letter of intent for the sale and/or conveyance of city-owned property to ISD 706 and 2154, parcel B, south of Borghen Road, for the new school facilities project. For discussion.
Thank you. Moved by Councilor Johnson, is there support? Support by Councilor Barneselli. Is there any further discussion? Councilor Johnson?
Thank you. So, to clarify, we're not agreeing to anything other than to be willing to have a discussion should the referendum pass in May.
Correct.
Is that my understanding?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right. It's been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries, thank you.
Along the same project lines, it was moved and supported to approve a resolution in support of the proposed collaborative new school facilities project between ISD 706 and ISD 2154.
I will move to adopt the resolution and support the proposed collaborative new school.
Thank you, Councilor Paulson, she moves to approve, is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilor Bearbow, is there any further discussion? Councilor Bearbow?
Uh, once we get that out, we will be publicizing that here before the election process and the ESEP process, is that correct, Britt?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the quote from Northeast Technical Services, or NTS, for material testing services for the 12th Avenue West Reconditioning Project in the amount of $6,389, and this is the project that Matt Reed just spoke about.
Thank you. Councilor Johnson?
I'll move to approve the quote from Northeast Technical Services for 12th Avenue Reconditioning in the amount of $6,389.
Thank you. Moved by, to approve by Councilor Johnson, is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilor Paulson, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries.
It was also moved and supported to approve the quote from Northeast Technical Services for material testing services for the Midway Drive Improvement Project in the amount of $9,178.
Councilor Johnson, once again.
Thank you, I will move to approve the quote from Northeast Service Technical Services for material testing for the Midway Drive Improvement Project in the amount of $9,178.
Thank you. Moved to approve by Councilor Johnson, is there support?
All support for discussion.
Support by Councilor Bearbow, further discussion? Councilor Bearbow?
Um, that project is not fully covered with dollar bills, you have to correct print.
There's a very small portion.
What, do you know what that portion is offhand?
Uh, less than $100,000.
Less than?
Hundred.
$2 million dollar project.
Yeah, so we have $100,000, that won't be due until sometime after completion.
Correct, next year.
Next year, okay, then I'm okay, then I'm okay with it, okay, because I was just looking at our little shortage here, and I don't want to make sure.
Yeah, definitely not due right now, no.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Councilor Bearbow. Any further discussion on this matter? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the resolution to make application to and accept funds from the ITRB Residential Redevelopment Grant Program for the property to be demolished at 106 Third Street North.
Councilor Baranzelli, motion to support that? Moved by Councilor Baranzelli to approve the resolution to make application to accept funds from the ITRB Residential Redevelopment Grant Program for property demolition at 106 Third Street North, is there support?
All support.
Support by Councilor Paulson, is there any further discussion? Councilor Bearbow?
Uh, again, depending how fast we do this, we don't need to worry about any dollars for our portion until after we actually set a date to tear that down, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I do not believe it's a city-owned property, so it's not.
Well, this is a...
I believe it's an HRA-owned property, so there would be no funds expended by the city whatsoever.
Yeah, we'd just pass, we have, right.
Which is passed through.
Right, passed through.
I thought it was one of ours, okay.
No, no.
No. Hey, thank you, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the request from the Dream Machines Motor Club to hold the Fuzzy Dice Cruise Night and Car Show, August 16th through 17th, 2019, and that'll be in downtown Virginia on Chestnut Street.
Councilor Baranzelli, Counselor?
I'll make that motion. Yes, I'll, I'll support that.
Motion to approve by Councilor Baranzelli, is there support?
All support.
Support by Councilor Bearbow, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. It was moved and supported to approve the request for the resolution of support for the 148th Fighter Wing.
Councilor Biondich?
I will make that motion.
Pardon?
I will make that motion.
Motion to approve the support for the 148th Fighter Wing by Councilor Biondich and supported by Councilor Johnson, is there any further discussion? For those who are in the audience, just a clarification, this is 148th, is the Fighter Wing based out of Duluth, they run, obviously, fighter jets out of there, the government from time to time has had them on the chopping block to move them as, as no longer to have a base, and they used to be a NORAD base, and over time, the government has rescinded that request, and they've kept them working here, they've received a bunch of awards and accolades for their work as reservists, as, as guards personnel, when they, when they are called to duty in Iraq and Afghanistan, these other places to, to do work and, and fly those missions, they get top-notch awards throughout the United States for that, and they're a very integral part of our, our community, and we should be supporting our military veterans, we all agree that's the case, so, for the public certification, that's why we're sending a letter in support of the 148th Fighter Wing. Councilor Bearbow?
Yeah, I'm 1,000% supportive of this, being an ex-air force officer myself, that this is an integral part of the protection of our mining industry, et cetera, in this area, because people, believe it or not, if they've ever seen the planes from adversaries that might come to this country to do havoc, this is an area that is strategic for our protection in the United States, so, I'm 100%, 1,000% supportive of this, maybe even 1,000,000%. Okay, but I am very supportive.
Thank you, Councilor Bearbow. Councilor Baranzelli?
I'll add another million to Charlie's motion. Thank you.
Lot of percents here. Okay, it's been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. The Committee of the Whole wanted to close session to discuss the potential purchase of real estate, it was tabled for more information that I have not received back yet, so we will continue that discussion at a future date. We also had a meeting at this meeting, also spoke with Dave Saline and Jackie Junick from the City of Evolith regarding the Evolith, Virginia Airport. We did make a motion at the Committee of the Whole Meeting, but they have asked us to not take action on it yet, as they are covering more details and getting more information, and will come back to us at our next council meeting in May.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. And then the final item, it was moved and supported to approve the submission of a letter to the MPCA on the proposed planned amendments for water quality standards, as this one time it is in favor of the City of Virginia for them to adopt these standards, so we wanted to express our concurrence with their suggestion.
Also move that resolution.
Moved by Councilor Bearbow, is there support?
Boy, I guess it's a letter.
Moved by Councilor Bearbow to submit the letter, is there support? Is there support? Support by Councilor Johnson, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, that was the final item.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The less, the less the word MPCA comes into our vocabulary, the better it is for all of us, okay. All right, thank you. Moved to item 10, Commission Lee is on the Department head reports, does anybody in the council have a report they'd like to give for the council this evening? Councilor Johnson?
Thank you. Mine's not really a report, it's more of a acknowledgement, it's National Poetry Month, the Virginia Public Library has been posting regularly different things, and at the beginning of the month, they said, "Why don't you go to your city council meeting and read a poem", and so I wrote a poem. I'm going to read a poem in honor of, that I wrote, it's called "Virginia, A Hard Word To Rhyme", a poem by me in the style of Dr. Seuss. "In 1892, a tiny village was voted anew; Two years they worked and planned and drew, A charter, a mayor, a commission for you, Together to create a place to live, a place to gather, to get, to give. The iron under the ground brought them here, And wood from the trees they would also clear, Build houses and stores in the grandest of ways, Living a life that would continue for thousands of days. Fires have come and fires have gone, Wiping out everything from building to lawn, Just rebuilding this very place, With rules about using brick and steel to replace. Everything new and fancy constructed in time, Virginia soon to be in the start of its prime. In 1895, a city was born and continues to thrive, A city of steam, of lakes and trails, Even had time where entertainment came on rails. A floating loon the biggest you see Is only part of the things that are free: The garden, the fountain, the golf and tennis, We even have police that help squash the menace. The fire department is always near, In an emergency, there is nothing to fear. Public works and parks and rec, Always doing something to make Virginia nice as heck. Engineering and legal and finance too, All working together, it's hard work, phew. And finally, the library, the heart of it all, Information you need, the library you call, Computers and media and lots of books, The library is filled in crannies and nooks. If a smile you need or perhaps a job lead, The library is your, is your go-to resource indeed. The month of April is for poetry you see, So off to Google to search my plea. It's 2019, and the words I can find to rhyme with Virginia are as defined: Virginia, I love ya, I never will leave ya, It has been a hecka wonderful time." Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Councilor Johnson. We will now officially refer to you as the Poem Wizard. All right, thank you. Excellent. All right, Councilor Baranzelli, can you top that?
We never knew he was a poet.
Well, you didn't know it.
No. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Councilor Bearbow, did you have a, a report?
I have a report.
Very good, thank you.
Yes, and I'm not sure how I can top that, this, this might...
Can you give it in the form of a poem?
No, I can't, this one, factual, factual figures and numbers, I'll give you...
Yeah, just the fact, just the fact, sir.
Yeah, yesterday, the Public Utilities Commission at, at 3:30 in the afternoon, I'm just going to give you a quick, quick update, and everybody's been asking about the steam conversion, so I'll give you some numbers as of yesterday, there are 715 services that are completed and done already. There are approximately, and this is give or take, a little 250 services left on South Side, so that's, should be pretty much completed this year or next year. There are close to the 300 applications, or they probably have them as of today, they're only a few behind as of yesterday, 300 applications for gas to homes that include the rest of South Side and going to North Side already, so they're ahead of schedule on these conversions, which is wonderful news, actually, for the people. They will be putting these figures and updates in newsletters, personal letters to people that, that need help, there'll be newspaper updates and billing updates, or updates on the bills you receive in the mail, so, and they will be making sure that everybody has information on that. The Honda Hills site for that proposed solar array is no longer in, in the books, they found out what it would cost to level and make that a workable service for the solar panels, it would be $890,000, so they scrapped that. They are looking now, the utilities, at the LA, LEA Wood Site Area, because they own property there, and that, they're going to be studying and looking to do that, because the City of Virginia owns part of that along with Hibbing, so we will, they will be able to get that site when available. So that's where they're going with that. And also, the, there was a approval of the revised construction and maintenance of city streetlight policy that we had asked for, I believe, for them, and they approved that yesterday, so that's completed. And that completes my report, they're only running a maintenance boiler right now because of the warmer weather, they don't need any big boilers going at this point in time, okay?
Yeah, thank you, Councilor Bearbow. I think what I'd like to do is, you know, just expand upon that a little bit, I think there was a request by Councilor Paulson, and I think Councilor Biondich as well, and Councilor Johnson, and I, and I concur, I think that I'd like to have...
They're coming to the May 7th meeting.
Coming to the May 7th meeting, okay.
It's already been scheduled, already been planned.
Thank you very much, okay. Councilor Biondich?
Oh, I just have a word from the library meeting.
Hey, thank you.
They have something new, and I'm, I'm sure all the young kids know about it, I'm not real familiar with it, but they are going to have an escape room for kids, should be fun for them. I probably would never escape. I, they also have a book sale coming up, for those that are avid readers, May 1st, they, you can buy a bag of books from the acquired ones that they have available for $15. And I have one last thing, Care Partners, they are a great supporter for cancer in our area, if the folks need help with money, they're doing a Swedish meatball fundraiser dinner tomorrow night from 3:00 to 6:00, or until it's gone, Holy Spirit Church, so if anybody can make it, it's a great house to support. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I wasn't going to do this, but I'm, I'm going to do it anyway, Councilor Johnson mentioned this, it's Poetry Month, and I read that it was, and, you know, and thinking about what, when I was a kid going to the Virginia Library, and I forget who the librarian was, I can't remember, but I, I learned a poem about the Flintstones way back when. No kidding, and I remember that poem, it was the first poem I ever, I ever memorized, because, I memorized it because it went to the, my dad would drop me off at the library, he'd go to work, do some work, and then he'd come back and pick me up after in a squad car, so, it goes like this. "Whoops, there goes the dinner chime, Who gets there first every time? Eats the steak I thought was mine? Dino, the dino. When we play go chase the stick, It's me that chases them. When Dino wants to bury his bone, I dig the hole for him. I'm snug in bed, about to snore, Someone scratches on the door. I wind up sleeping on the floor, Because of Dino, the dino." And I share that with you, because, I mean, you know, you, you talk about how important the library is, and it is a very important part of our whole community, and from when you're a little kid, you learn a lot of things at the library, and that was a long time ago, you know, I'm a little older now, now, which that was about 60 years ago, I don't know where that is, so, thanks again to Councilor Johnson, that was a very eloquent poem that you, that you wrote, and I think we should frame that baby. Okay, I have a couple announcements, first, that, you know, talk about our finances, I just wanted to mention, I didn't remember, I guess that's necessary, so, okay. For those who don't know, Benedictine Health Systems sold their two nursing homes, okay? Sold their two nursing homes, and so, as a result of that, I'm sure there'll be some other things in the paper with respect to that, but Monarch Healthcare is taking it over, and they currently operate 39 senior living and healthcare rehabilitation facilities in Minnesota and Wisconsin, and the reason I bring this up is that I'm sure they're going to be professionally run, but we're going to be missing out on the chili feed, you know, there's the chili cook-off, so, I think there is a group and organization that's going to be taking that over, so, you know, don't despair, we'll still have that, apparently so, but just for a reminder, information for the public that St. Benedictine, the healthcare system, has sold those two nursing homes. And then, just a reminder for the city crew and everybody else, the Virginia Rotary Club, you know, has their annual Duke Score at your barbecue, you know, again, a $6 pork or beef sandwich is Wednesday, May 1st, it's Wednesday, May 1st, at the Gessenemy Lutheran Church, and you can order them, and they'll be going until the supplies last, there's a number that you can call, I'll give it to you right now, it's 748-6666, that's 748-6666, I know you'd probably have to run a different telephone number than that, but, but that's what it is, so, if you want to order a Duke Score's barbecue, and it's a worthy cause as the, as many other community organizations raise money to help people, Rotary Club does an outstanding job doing so, I think Britt and, and Steve and I are members of that Rotary, and they do really good, really good, we all meant to work for that, so, just a reminder of the Duke Score's barbecue, so. I have nothing else, we'll move to our city staff, anything more, Britt?
At the Virginia Community and Lakes Committee meeting today, we have determined that the beach cleanup day will be June 1st, and if it's rainy that day, we'll do June 8th, and it will open immediately after that, so the next day, so we either be open by June 2nd or June 9th.
June 1st and then June...
June 8th is the rain day, so if you want to come and help us get it cleaned up, they cut the weeds, they rake the sand, they do all kinds of really good work. YMCA is expanding their programming down at the beach this year, so they'll be down there quite a bit during the day.
Fantastic, fantastic use of that.
Very good use.
Very good.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Britt. Our city attorney, Mr. Mark Bouderec, Tom Bouderec, anything, Tom?
Oh, oh, no, thank you, Larry.
And the reason I said Mark?
You didn't get my name.
I know, the reason I said Mark, because I had to deal with Mark all day today, there's our maintenance guy, he's all over the place, does great work, so, I was thinking about all the work you did for me today, so I apologize, Tom, nothing from you. Okay, Pam, anything?
It's my turn to talk, but I don't want to keep you, so I will forego it, so we don't have to be.
Another poem. Whoa, it's contagious. Sherry, do you have anything you, you have to add?
Yes, I have to add on to Pam's poem. She's a poet, but she doesn't know it, but her feet show it, because they're long pillows.
Wow, holy cow, what a talent. Before we adjourn, Councilor Bearbow?
Yeah, I, I forgot, I have just one announcement to make, Ram's regular board meeting is this Thursday, the board will be going up to Twin Meadows up in Ely for their meeting, and also a tour of Twin Meadows and what they have going on up there, and I will come back over there and report to the council after that, at our next council meeting.
Thank you. And then, one other item, it's, we haven't, hasn't been official yet, but we've got notification that there likely will not be a bonding bill this year. Now, they're still working on it, but it's likely there may not be one, they're too far apart, and we've got a few weeks left in legislative session, so, bonding bill is where we have money or request for our fire department, public safety building, that's in jeopardy right now, so, we'll stay tuned while we're getting some more information on what'll be going on again next week, so, thank you, everybody, does anybody else have anything else you'd like to bring up before we adjourn the council meeting this evening? Hearing, yes, Councilor Bearbow?
You know, Pam, there's still confusion, and maybe you can just make an announcement, there's a potential absentee balloting for the school district, people still won't think it, they should come here to sit, I'll maybe just tell them where they actually need to go for the absentee ballots for that school referendum.
Okay, the absentee ballots are at the school superintendent's office, and you can either use the door on 5th, or the...
Door 5 or 14?
Or 14, door 14 on the north side of the school.
5 is a south side.
5 would be...
South side.
South side, okay.
Okay.
And that's where the absentee ballots are.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else have anything they'd like to add before we adjourn? Well, maybe I should ask a couple more things here. Thank you very much, everybody, it was a great week, and once again, kudos to our fire and mess personnel who work hard every day, along with our police department, and all our staff and workers, so, we stand to adjourn to our next meeting, have a great evening, and be safe.